So it's six o'clock and since we're all here, we'll get started then. So this is a Great Barrington Planning Board meeting for Thursday, July 28. Chris did start the recording on this meeting and so pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. And the governor's July 16, 2022 revised order extending remote participation by all members in any meeting of a public body. This meeting of the planning board will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. Specific information and the general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public and or parties with a right and or requirement to attend this meeting can be found on the town's website. For this meeting, members of the public who wish to listen to the meeting may do so by following the instructions at the top of the agenda. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. In addition, except for procedural and housekeeping matters, town residents shall have the right to address a board on any item that requires a vote at the time before a board votes on that item. Such residents will be allowed as much time as proponents of item is permitted to have. So we will start with a roll call agenda. Jonathan Hinkin?
I am here.
Excellent. Pedro Pachano?
Here.
Wonderful. Malcolm Fick?
Here.
Great. Jeremy Ega?
Here.
Gone the extra mile to attend today. Brandy Nelson, I'm here also. All right, great. Thanks, everybody. Chris, based on the agenda, it looks like we do not have any formates.
That's right.
Excellent. We'll move on to minutes of July 14, 2022. Do we have a motion to approve as amended?
So moved.
Thank you, Jonathan. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Malcolm. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Jeremy?
Aye.
Malcolm?
Aye.
Pedro?
Aye.
Jonathan?
Aye.
Brandy, aye. Item number three is to appoint representatives to the housing subcommittee. So per our last meeting, Mr. Pachano, who has been serving thus far, has declined to continue. Is that right, Pedro? Resigned. You have resigned.
Yeah, resigned. I think it's ready for some fresh blood.
No problem. And Malcolm, I think you had expressed some interest in in potentially picking up that ball?
I did and I would.
Okay.
I nominate Malcolm Fick to the housing subcommittee.
You'd like to make that as a motion?
As a motion, yes.
Excellent. Thanks, Jeremy. Do we have a second?
Sure, I'll second that.
Thank you, Jonathan. Do we have any other discussion? Okay, then we'll vote on it. Jeremy? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, Malcolm?
Aye.
Pedro?
Aye.
Jonathan?
Aye.
Brandy, aye. All right, let's see. So Chris, so we have nominated him. We have to bring this to the select board, right?
No, I think I think.
That's it? That's our, that's our?
It's your appointment, yeah.
Okay, excellent. Thank you, Malcolm.
I have one, one, one question, Brandy.
Yes, Pedro.
I think we need to inform Lee Davis that she, I guess, is the de facto chair, since she was the vice chair. And so if they want to reorganize in the committee, I think Lee would have to organize a meeting and for them to have a meeting. In other words, I think Lee needs to know that she's the one now.
Sure. Okay, I'll go ahead and take care of that communication.
All right, great.
Thank you. All right, so item number four is site plan review of 302 Stockbridge Road and application from McDonald's Corporation for site plan approval for plan changes to the drive-through lanes and parking lots at 302 Stockbridge Road per section 10.5 of the zoning bylaw as a continuation from June 23, 2022. So I believe in our packets, we had updated plans submitted by the applicant. Do we have members of the applicant's team here tonight, Chris?
It must be Steve Wilson's raising his hand, so I'll promote him into panelist role. The major items for the board's review, I think you looked over all of the plans. There were some. Sure, there were some issues outstanding from the previous special permit granted by the select board for the site that included trees on the Stockbridge Road frontage. So the plans submitted to you now show trees that will conform to that special permit. In addition to the three trees that they will plant on the east side of the site where they're removing some of the parking lot. And I believe page five of the plans show the specification for the under canopy lighting. Mr. Wilson, you're from Boulder Engineering?
I am. Yes, yeah, I think you just summarized it. Yes, we coordinated with the tree committee as requested by the board. And the landscaping plan has been updated per their recommendations on species and number of trees. And as was said as well, we updated the spec to on the, to the lighting for the overhead canopy. Other than that, the plan is the same as you saw last time.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Board members, does anyone have any questions about what has been submitted? Jonathan?
Could we share that screen, Chris?
Sure.
Sorry, I've got it up on my other screen.
Okay, everybody should be able to see the screen. Can zoom in or Steve, you can walk us through it or whatever you need. Could you zoom in a little? This is the, the changes to the drive-through are, are down here south of the existing restaurant building. So one drive-through lane will become two. And the added trees on the Stockbridge Road frontage are over here on the west side. They are on the applicant's property just easterly of the public sidewalk on Stockbridge Road. There's four trees there, two Elms and two Katsuras. And the sycamore tree is on town property between the sidewalk and the highway.
All right. Mr. Wilson, can you tell us what caliber tree you would specify for installation there? It's not reflected on the plan that I could.
It'd probably be about three inch.
Okay, are you comfortable with us including that as a condition?
Sure.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so Jonathan, I know you wanted this reflected on the screen. Did you have any other questions?
No, I mean, is the, is the Katsura on our list of street trees?
It is not.
I think it is. I thought I looked the other day.
I'm looking at it right now.
We got it from the, we got it from the tree committee.
Yeah.
Pretty common, good street tree.
There's a beautiful one on the, on the sixth hole at Way Antonia. I always hit my drive-in do.
Yes, unless I've got a, an old one, it's not on the list. You know, Mike, I mean, it's interesting that you coordinate with the tree committee on that particular species. I wish that they would pay a little bit more attention to what the impact the tree has on habitat. For example, I'm always preaching about the white oak on this board and how the white oak can support more than 500 different species of insects and mammals. So, you know, that tree to me seems like a no-brainer to put up anywhere. So anyway, I'm surprised that they recommended that.
I don't have a problem with some diversity in recommendation. I think one thing we want to be careful of in, in, with trees is making sure that we're providing for some diversity just given how badly white oaks were damaged this year by the spongy moss. So I don't have an issue with, with there being some variety. I think that's, it's essential overall. I don't disagree with you. It's a lovely tree at maturity.
Do you wonder what's wrong with American trees? There's so many beautiful ones. I had to plant one from Asia. But anyway, again.
We asked the applicant to, to get a recommendation. It, they did that. I agree with you. It's not, I just pulled up the, the list off the page. I agree, it's not there. I have seen it commonly used as well, pretty hardy in this kind of environment, so.
It's hardy because nobody eats it. Nobody takes advantage of it. You know, whenever you see something that's deer resistant is because it's completely alien to the environment in which it's being going to be used.
I don't think there'll be a lot of deer at this location.
No, but I'm just saying, you know, in general, when you, when you deal with plants, it's foliage and they tell you, yeah, this plant is great. It's, it's deer resistant. Well, it's frankly resistant to just about every other piece wildlife in the region, in the area. But anyway, I digress. We can move on.
Anything else, Pedro?
No, no, we can move on. That's it.
Are we keeping the trees as shown?
Yeah.
We can keep the trees as shown, assuming they came to you from the tree committee.
Yep.
We'll follow up with the tree committee and ask them if they're adding this to the species.
Update their list.
Yeah. And if you're fine with the condition that they be three-inch caliper, that, that's fine.
Two to three-inch caliper, please. That's okay.
Okay.
Yes.
Malcolm, did you have any questions?
No.
Jeremy, did you have any questions?
No, I do not. Sorry.
Okay, and Pedro, I assume you guys ran through 10.5 previously?
Yeah.
Okay, so we don't need to do that again.
We did this when you were here.
End of June.
Okay.
I was on.
Yeah, we, we went through it.
Anyone's near, we did go through the.
We did go through.
Okay. All right, so that being the case, were, were there any anticipated conditions at that point in time?
Nope. Not that I can remember. Chris, can you help out? Maybe?
That's all I can recall.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't recall anything.
So that being the case then, can we have a motion to approve the current plans, which I just lost on my page? Let's see, what are they revised date? I don't see a rub date on them. I guess, let's see. Do you have a revision date? I don't see that on the title.
No, but I, I have the plans here, so.
Okay, the plans as received with the condition that the proposed trees that will be installed have a caliper between two and three inches?
Yeah, the plans were received here July 19.
Yep.
Does anyone want to make that motion?
Or move, in a second.
Thank you, Jonathan. Thank you, Malcolm. Do we have any further discussion? Hearing none. Jeremy, what's your vote?
Aye.
Malcolm, thank you. Malcolm, Pedro?
Aye.
Jonathan?
Aye.
Brandy, aye. All right, thank you, Mr. Wilson.
Thank you very much. Appreciate the time and help. Thank you, Chris, for all your help.
You'll see, I, I will issue an approval out. You'll get it by email.
Thank you much. Have a great night.
Yep, you too. All right, item number five on the agenda, site plan review, 116 Brush Hill Road, application from Deborah C. Mars and William Ryan, care of Kelly Granger Parsons and Associates, Inc.
Brandy, can I interrupt for one second?
Oh, sure.
You, you may want to ask attendees if they had any comments on the list.
I'm so sorry, you know, so what we've typically been doing, and I think I mentioned this a couple of meetings ago, but I probably should do it every meeting, is that we watch for raised hands if people have any questions. I do have the participant list up in the sidebar of my Zoom meeting, and I think Chris and I are both watching for raised hands. So if people wish to make comment, please do raise your hand. So thank you, Malcolm. All right, so two-family residential use and for clearing and grading more than 10,000 square feet at 116 Brush Hill Road for sections 8-1 and 10-5 of the zoning bylaw. This is a continuation from our last meeting. Hello, Mr. Parsons.
Yes, good evening. If you remember at the last meeting, we talked about, or you requested that we come back with a plan with some volume calculations and some areas to be cut and filled. And you asked us to consider or reconsider moving the house, rotating the house. My client does not want to rotate the house. And so we have come back to you with a plan that Chris should have. Hopefully he can share it for me. That shows some areas to be filled. An area to be filled, an area to be cut, and some retaining walls that the builder has asked us to show on the plan that'll retain the soil. And we're we're going to be filling about 12,000 square feet. That's going to be about 745 cubic yards. We're going to cut 3,500 square feet. And that's about 175 cubic yards. That's cubic yards that's going to be cut. We're going to have a retaining fieldstone retaining wall, boulder retaining wall. I sent Chris a picture of the other house that's on this property. And the back of that has a retaining wall very similar to what the builder expects to do here. He built that house, I believe, and Mark should be in the audience. I can't see who's here, but I expect, I expect that he is, Mark Rosengren. And so we're going to cut down a maximum, looks like the maximum cut's going to be about five feet on the south side of the house. And then we're going to fill, we're going to step the garage down a half a foot, so there'll be a half a foot step up from the garage into the house. We can lose a half a foot or so there. And then put a retaining wall up and then most of the area below that retaining wall was going to be filled anyways for the septic system. I didn't show you the septic plan the last time, but the plan that was approved by the Board of Health shows us filling that, that area down there. Then we have to use septic sand under the soil absorption system, but other than that, it can just be native, pretty much native backfill, except for around the tank. So that's, that's what we've come up with. That's what the builder and his client would like and I guess we're open to suggestions or thoughts.
Do you want to see that, Brandy?
Yeah, please.
Yes?
Yes, please.
This is the photo. Sorry, Mike, I, I didn't see this yesterday.
Oh, okay.
So that's the photo of the stone retaining wall Mike referenced. That's on the, that's at the other house?
Yeah, that's at the other house that's on this property.
Okay, and I'll put the plan that the board received today. This is the cut and fill area that Mike referenced in his narrative and the cut and fill volume calculations are shown on this plan.
All right, board members. So we requested that the applicant consider rotating the house for a couple of reasons. They're declining to do so. We also had a sort of philosophical discussion about the importance of adding housing. You know, this is quantifying the extent of both the tree removal and and the extent that fill will be provided on site, which was, you know, two things that we did ask to have quantified. Do board members have other questions, given where we are right now as far as the applicant's desire to maintain the house in the current location? Jonathan?
I was just wondering if a, if a guard might be required on the top of that wall.
That'll be something that building code will have to address?
Yep, 30, 30 inches from grade.
Anything above 30 inches requires a guard?
Yep.
All right, well, we're right at 30 inches. I think we're, we're at the highest. The top of the wall is 902 and a half and the bottom's 900. So there's, there's your 30 inches right there. That wasn't by, that wasn't by plan because I'm not a student of the building code, but
By luck.
Yeah, it looks like we got lucky with that.
Pedro, do you have any questions?
Kind of an administrative question. Is this drawing that Mike has submitted replacing the original drawing or is this in addition to? Reason I'm asking is because the drawing that I'm looking at doesn't show the house. So if we're conducting a site plan review, I mean, we're not conducting a site plan review on a, on cut and fill ground. We're conducting a site plan on the building of the house.
Can I ask for a clarification? It doesn't show the extension or the, the house, the existing house or the proposed?
The proposed, the, the house that we're doing set my review for.
You don't see the footprint? It's on the screen.
The footprint is on the screen on today's plan. The house floor elevations were provided to you in the previous submitted. Forgive me, but I don't see the footprint. I haven't seen drawing up on my screen. It's, can you see the shared screen? That's the existing house. No, that's the new house. Okay, I got it. Sorry, I was confused.
Yep, no problem, no problem. So, but I would consider this part of a full application, you know, the previous, this is supplemental information, right?
Okay.
We had to change the scale, obviously, because the other one was a much smaller scale. We couldn't show you this detail without changing the scale and.
I get that. I didn't bother to go and look at the other one. Sorry about that.
No problem. Anything else, Pedro?
No, no, good, nothing else.
Malcolm, anything for you?
No, I'm good.
Okay, Jeremy, anything for you?
No, I'm good too.
Okay. So if there are no other comments and we didn't have any conditions out of the last meeting, do we have a motion to approve?
Moved.
Second.
Thank you, Jonathan. Thank you, Malcolm. Any further discussions on? Seeing none. Jeremy, what's your vote?
Aye.
Malcolm, what's your vote?
Aye.
Pedro, what's your vote?
Aye.
Jonathan, what's your vote?
Aye.
And although I also, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, Mike. We'll issue a decision tomorrow.
Good night. Thank you.
Good night. All right, item number six on the agenda, zoning strategies to increase housing opportunities. We've got two items under there, and this comes from our more broad-based discussion last time. We wanted to get some actual items down on paper that came out of the, the BRPC. Chris, help me recall the gentleman's last name.
Chris Brown.
Chris Brown, Mr. Brown from BRPC, giving us some ideas about how to increase housing. So two ideas that seem to rise to the top for us were, oh, let's see, no, these are not ideas for rising to the top. These are just our internal ideas. So rising the site plan review for two-family and for accessory dwelling units and revising the regulations for three-family residential uses. So some of this, I think, stems from the discussion we had last time and we've had on several occasions about whether or not housing-related uses should be subject to site plan review. We've got that in a couple of sections of the code. And I think what we'd like to do is have a little bit of a discussion about whether or not there is merit to continuing the way we are or whether or not that's creating an unnecessary impediment to a more lot-by-lot approach to increasing housing opportunities in our community. And I know Pedro, you've had, you know, you've done some good thinking on this. Did you want to add anything initially to the discussion?
No, I guess, I guess the only thing I'll, I'll just reiterate is that the idea here is that if we have housing uses that are by right in our bylaw, that they should be allowed to just go through without review. That's my opinion. And I hope that we have some discussion on that. That would take care of all, obviously, single family. We don't care what people do on the single family lots, and we say in our bylaw that we don't care what people do on there when they build two houses or they want to build an extra house. But in fact, we do care because we bring them in anyway. I think to Jeremy's point, I think Jeremy made a great point, which I always fail to make, and that's that this kind of thing plays into a sort of, I don't know if you want to call it social equity or it just plays into the idea that there's many people who won't ever come to town to do anything. And we, I think that as a town, we'd like for those people who, for whatever reason, are averse to coming to town to be able to build their homes and to build them legally and to be able to be subject to the, the expertise of the building inspector and the rest of it. So I would ask your consideration of this. To me, it's, it's a no-brainer, but I'd like to hear what you guys have to say.
Malcolm, you look like you're about to say something.
Yeah, I mean, it's not such a no-brainer for me because I, while the, the, the building inspector certainly has the building code to review, I mean, I'm not sure that he reviews the bylaws that we, that we review in site plan review.
Oh, he does.
So he does evaluate pedestrian and vehicular safety, minimizing obstruction to scenic views, minimizing visual intrusion for parking, storage and outdoor service areas, light glare and spill on neighboring properties. The groundwater content minimizing groundwater contamination. I, I don't know that these are building code issues. I, I'm not conversant with the building code, but if these are things that are the only way to conform to our zoning bylaws is site plan review, then I, I, I have a problem with just dropping these, these items as part of the review.
Well, we're not dropping it completely. It's just in residential. And I mean, he is the zoning enforcement officer, so if it's in the zoning, then he has an obligation to.
And it is, again, it's not for all residential.
That's another question. For all residential, but.
Not for all resident because, again, it's very specific here. I'm calling for what we are already saying in our bylaws is by right.
Right.
I'm not asking for three-family, multifamily, any excuse, any other thing. Just what we and the town has agreed to say. We want this, you can do this. We want more of it. Give it to us.
But isn't it by right if you conform to building code and zoning bylaws?
Which you would still have to do.
Right, but who is going to review the proposal to the zoning bylaws?
The zoning enforcement office.
And so he's going to check setbacks. He's going to check lot coverage.
I'm looking at the lights on the Holiday Inn Express right up the road from where I live and.
That's not a two-family structure.
That's, that's not residential.
That's not two-family lot. It's, it's, we're not asking for that, or at least I'm not asking to, to not have a review on that type of project.
I'm, I'm curious how some of you feel about the, this proposal in terms of, I think, almost an implicit degree of sort of checks and balances that this board made to the public in terms of, you know, hey, we are, we are saying by right two-family, you know, we are saying by right ADU, but, you know, we will offer some checks and balances. So do you not think we are going to have to engage in some discussion around why that seems to be going by the wayside?
Well, you're going to, to make the change, you're going to have to go back to town meeting.
Agreed, yeah.
Also, I have one, I have one other thing. Chris, it seemed like Chris Brown was going to. He was, he, he was going to forward the PowerPoint to us and, and it was supposed to be attached to the minutes and I didn't see it either way.
Sorry about that. I can send it tonight and I'll make sure it's attached to the approved minutes.
Okay.
I have, I have already attached them to the minutes. They're, I ran them through as one piece. I'll go as a PDF to the town clerk when we finish the meeting.
Thanks.
Okay, but we didn't see them.
Okay, well, okay, so you want me to resend them out? I just, all I did was I printed off the slides from the PowerPoint.
I just, I think it would be handy for us to have the PowerPoint just for reference.
Is it relevant to the discussion, John?
No, it's, it's not necessarily. Okay, but we'll, we do want to make sure the record is complete and that everybody, you know, the board members and the public have access to that record. So Kim, if you don't mind circulating it, or if Chris, if you don't mind circulating it, that'd be very helpful. Appreciate it.
I can resend it. I have it ready to go to the town clerk, so.
Thanks, Kim. Okay, um, let's see. So is there a downside? I mean, I guess I'm a little bit in the camp of Malcolm. I worry that the issues of enforcement are sometimes not always completed here in the community. There's plenty of instances of that. And so what's, what's the risk in the community if we remove the site plan provision from some of these residential uses?
Well, if you're making an argument that, that enforcement is lax, then you're also saying that whatever we enforce on this board is lax, so it doesn't get enforced anyway.
Right.
Yeah, well, that's, that's true.
If that's what you're saying, then we have to look around town and we have to ask ourselves, well, what hasn't been enforced that's really causing a detriment to the, you know, to the the ability of our town.
Your white oak trees aren't getting planted, Pedro.
Yeah, this is Chris. If, if, whether it's a condition of your site plan approval or whether it's a specific requirement of the zoning bylaw, it needs to be enforced. If enforcement's an issue, that's a separate discussion. If there are items in your site plan review that you feel should be explicit in the zoning bylaw, for example, this board has spoken in the past about lighting, exterior lighting. That's not explicit in the zoning bylaw. It just says, you know, uses shall not cause glare. This is under six point four performance standards, but there's no specific regulation about having dark sky compliant, full cutoff fixtures, what the LED color temp should be, what the lumen level should be. You know, we don't have that kind of stuff, so. Maybe there are some, some things that you would actually like to add to the zoning bylaw. If you do consider taking the site plan, the, the more discretionary, I shouldn't say discretionary, the more qualitative items from site plan approval out.
Yeah, that's a great constructive suggestion, Chris, that we consider potentially augmenting the performance standards in lieu of the site plan review. I think that, that could be very constructive.
That might speak to a lot of what Malcolm's concerns are. But concerns that this board has talked about for a couple of years now.
I mean, it, it does. I mean, if we can come up with an objective standard for some of these things, but some, some of them are not. I mean, you know, when we talk about pedestrian and vehicular safety, it really depends on the proposal to a large extent. Minimizing cut and fill, we just had a discussion about that and and even though the applicant, you know, rejected our suggestions, at least I think it was a good suggestion. I, I, I wish they had. I was disappointed that they hadn't. And, and I think if we take away that forum, we're taking away that, that opportunity to, you know, to evaluate some of these things, which admittedly are written in a subjective way. Minimizing obstruction of scenic views is, is not a, an objective standard, but it is, I think it's important to discuss.
That one I, I find a little bit harder to, to think about quantifying Malcolm only because, you know, from a residential neighborhood, if the house meets the zoning requirements, you know, I don't have a right to look through my neighbor's backyard at a scenic view. You know, I, I don't, I don't see that as a, a right.
You know, I think.
It's usually from public ways and places, right?
I agree with you, Brandy, but I, I think some of these things are subjective, the way they're, they're written to minimize, which is, which, which kind of gives us the opportunity to suggest, and, and we do take that too.
What, what if we took an approach of looking at ten point five point five and, and seeing if we could come up with some performance criteria to provide a little bit more specific guidance? I, I know other communities I've worked in, you know, any kind of residential use doesn't trigger the site plan review requirement unless you're going to clear 10,000 square feet or, you know, unless you're going to have a larger impact than, you know, maybe just adding a garage with an ADU above it. So we could, we could think about that as a possible approach.
I'm open to it and I, and I am sympathetic, actually. I'm, I'm, I'm playing devil's advocate a little bit here because I think we can. There's really only three sections, I think, eight point one, eight point two, and maybe eight point 10 that really are, are impacted by this. So obviously, there's a lot of residential construction don't, doesn't have site plan review, but I just think we should be cautious about removing this review because we do spend a lot of time talking about where's the, where is the emergency exit on a stairway on a, on a house that's being converted to a multifamily or two-family house? Where's? We, we've had those discussions in the past, and I think they're valid, good, valid discussions.
The problem, you know, the, and the problem I'm having with the examples you're bringing up, Malcolm, is that they're all building code problems. And I can tell you, a practitioner, they're building code issues. And I could say as a practitioner, none of the building inspectors in, in South County who have worked here are lax in any way of enforcing this stuff, at least at the approval level.
So I'm, I'm not suggesting anybody's lax. What I'm suggesting is that there are subjective issues that come before the, the board and we are not hesitant to make suggestions, and I think many of those suggestions are valid suggestions. And I think we've improved some of the projects that have come along by some of those suggestions.
Pedro, just to push back on your comment a little bit. I don't know if all of the issues are building code issues, you know.
The, the couple of, sorry, it's not in her up, but what I meant.
You did.
If it didn't, I did, you know, sorry. But what I was saying is that the examples that Malcolm's bringing up, they're all building code issues. He brought up the toxic waste section of the, of the site plan review. And toxic waste, as far as I know, is not allowed in, in any residential neighborhood. Or if it were these, where, I mean, I, as far as I know, that kind of activity is not allowed in any residential neighborhood. And if you're dealing with toxic substances, there's a whole branch of government that deals with toxic substances, substances, so.
Right, but if we're talking about adding additional impervious cover on a single-family building lot by building out an ADU and in addition to accommodate a two-family unit, which well could happen, and you know, you may need to increase the size of your driveway. I don't believe the building code is going to have anything to say about, you know, managing drainage that's going to flow potentially onto your neighbor's property or out onto the municipal street, right?
This board also has nothing to say about an eight thousand square foot house. It's still on a, you know, two-acre lot.
For my earlier comment, that other communities may want to have that or do have that purview, and we may want to think about it if that's where we're seeing a lot of.
We're not. That's, that's the whole point is that we're not.
I would be open to considering some additional performance standards. You know, I, I like Chris's suggestion, you know, particularly as it pertains to lighting. You know, for my, for myself, I feel like I'm always commenting on lighting. It's not codified anywhere. It's just like a nice suggestion. It would be nice to have that as a performance standard. And there may be other areas where we want to do that.
Is there any number of dark sky, dark sky bylaws as a model for that?
Yeah, you know, I, I raised the, the bylaw issue some time ago, and I think I bit off more than I could chew at the time. You know, we were talking about it being a town, you know, a general bylaw, not just a zoning bylaw. Maybe we want to think about paring that back and providing some lighting guidance in the zoning. The feedback I had gotten from the select board was, could I find some examples of bringing existing buildings into compliance with the general bylaw when they've already gone ahead and, you know, installed obnoxious floodlights on their buildings? And that, I, I haven't, I haven't been successful in finding that except in a couple of instances out like in New Mexico where there's astronomical observatories and, and there's like good community will to want to maintain dark sky conditions. I, you know, we're in a little bit of a different environment here. So the horse is pretty far out of the barn at this point as far as lighting is concerned.
I'd like to bring something up, something else up for the board's consideration, and that's where you have, we've had a few of these where you have existing structures that are already either two-family or three-family in actual use. They may be assessed that way. They may have been used that way for decades, but they may not have received official zoning approval when they were converted forty years ago. You just add that case on Gidding Street, for example. In a case like that where there's no modifications to the building, no modifications to the site, there are no increases at all, you're just legalizing what is there. Is, is that a carve-out that you could see? And same thing for an ADU, where the ADU exists or is being put into an existing building where there's no real exterior changes? Is that something that you think is worth considering to, to exempt those types of existing buildings or very small alterations from the site plan process? Because technically, site plan review is appealed, so you know, an existing three-family house or an existing two-family house that just comes in to be legalized so they can refinance the mortgage could be appealed. And that's, that's not really helping anyone. So maybe there's a carve-out there at the very least. We can work on performance standards also.
Yeah, I, I mean, I think of the last few that we have seen before the board, Chris, we've made almost no comments. You know, we, we've identified that, you know, that use has been in existence for some time and there's adequate parking and you know, again, we may only comment on if you put in any new lighting, make it downward facing. So I think that's a good suggestion. How's the rest of the board feel about that? Jeremy, you raising your hand? No?
Yeah, well, I mean, I, I think as a fallback, if we don't get anywhere with the, with the discussion, but I'm interested in pursuing this in this session.
Okay.
But we can keep, keep it as a fallback.
I, I wonder if I wonder if part of the issue might be the submittal requirements. I mean, if, if, I mean.
Jeremy, can you meet? Yeah, thanks.
I, I'd like to know where he is.
Yeah.
The, you know, if, if, if someone is just converting, I mean, or, or trying to make legal or grandfathered, you know, multifamily or, or, you know, actually, we're not even talking about multifamily here, I don't think, but I, maybe we are. But maybe the submittal requirements of requiring engineering drawings and elevations and all that stuff is overkill anyway. So maybe we can actually cut down on what some of the submittal requirements are in, in some of these circumstances. Even if we don't eliminate the meeting to review the, 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 the thing. Perhaps the, i- if, if it's the cost of hiring an engineer or cost of hiring an architect that's part of the keeping people from actually getting, bringing houses into compliance, then perhaps, perhaps we can cut down on some of the submittal requirements.
Would, would you think about considering the same approach if someone was not changing the footprint of an existing structure but converting a single family to a two-family?
Yes, I think, yeah. If, if they're not changing the footprint and they're not, you know, paving, you know, the, the, the yard and they're not, you know, making external changes that I, I, I think that would be appropriate.
Jonathan, you've been quiet. Oops, sorry, no.
No, that's all right.
Well, I would just add to, to Chris's wish list that I think we should consider reconsider the driveway bylaw, because I think it's, given where we are now trying to encourage houses and multiple houses on lots, we really need to have another look at that. I know it's not germane to this particular discussion, but I think it's something we need to put on the table.
That, that was a discussion you and I were having before the meeting opened. Do you want to lay that on the table now?
If Brandy's open to it, sure.
Sure, go ahead.
Just as, as an example, my house at forty-one West Plain Road has, I don't know what it has for fundage, but it's way more than two hundred feet. And it also has, between the house and the school, is a fairly steep embankment. And the, the base of the hill is all floodplain. And so if you're going to build the house, you really have to build it on the embankment. And, and, but the existing house has a circular driveway. And it's, you know, probably a hundred or two hundred feet from a prospective house site. And according to the town bylaws, unless, what is it again, Chris, extraordinary circumstances or something? That you can't do it.
It's chapter one fifty-three.
And so that, so I think it's something we need to look at in light of how we're trying to encourage more housing.
Yeah, and I think that's germane. I mean, parking is one of the things that we talk about in site plan review. So, you know, if we're going to, if, if we're going to codify this so we don't have to do site plan review on some of these by right, then that's something that should be specifically addressed.
So if we look at single, two-family and ADU uses in terms of site plan review and in terms of driveway access, right? And are we? I guess I, I have to think about where we are in terms of shared driveway, right? We already allow three units, right? Three dwelling units to be accessed. And three lots.
We took, we took the shared driveway at the town meeting, all right?
Yeah.
Yeah, that was revised and you, you even allow more units to, to be shared by, to, to be met by shared drivers. So that was a good, good change.
Yeah, that was, that was good. That was the shared driveway, but not, not the
A single curb.
Not just a curb cut.
Is a curb cut in our purview?
No.
No, it's in the select works.
It is, okay. All right, well, why don't we think about looking at at ten point five and seeing if we can develop some performance standards on a couple of big key items that relate to ADUs and, and two-family uses?
Okay.
Can we briefly just have a discussion here just for for food for thought until the next meeting about what those things would be?
Sure, let me pull up ten point five. I think Malcolm's been sort of reading off some of them. But again, I think we can probably reflect on conditions that we've put on the last few. But again, I think we can probably reflect on conditions that we've put on the last few site plan reviews that pertain to residential uses. I think li- lighting is one that's not explicitly stated as a site plan review criteria. Um,
Well, it is.
I don't know if you guys remember.
The light flare and spill in the dark sky. I mean, that's, that's specific, but the word minimize isn't, uh, objective enough.
Right, right.
All of these minimize, these are, are subjective.
Brandy, before we go on, if I could just say one last thing, that, um, I think you guys remember that I think kind of keeping account in a way and, uh, uh, an accounting of things we've discussed on site plan reviews since back in, in October. There's only been one site plan review that we've done, it's housing related, that, um, has talked about anything other than parking and lighting. And that was the one that we just reviewed today.
Um, perhaps the, perhaps the approach on these is to define, um, the conditions of, uh, where we don't need to review these items.
Yeah.
So if there is no cut and fill, there is no, uh, change in, uh, how the pedestrians, uh, uh, and vehicles are entering and exiting a site, if there's not uh, any change in that would affect the scenic views. I mean, I'm, I'm just going down the list and saying,
I think that's a good approach.
Uh, you know, if these eight things are met, then there's no site plan required. If any of these are not, then there's a site plan review required for those items that, uh, um, uh, don't meet the, uh, uh, the threshold.
Yeah. Sure.
Ki- maybe can we define instead of none, can we define some minimum? Like if it doesn't go over some minimum threshold?
Sure. If you all see any examples in your travels, please send them my way. If not, we'll, um, start to draft some suggestions, but my staff will.
You and your staff. Excellent. All right, Pedro, remind me what your revised regulations for three family residential uses?
Oh, I don't have one. This is, uh, Chris's thing.
Yeah, uh, so item six B on your agenda, um, was a suggestion that came out of Chris, Chris Brown's discussion last meeting. Where if you, if you look at the zoning bylaw table of uses, three family uses are grouped in with what we call multi-family uses. And they're subject to special permits, I think in most, or maybe of all cases.
In most cases, not in the B district or the B two, B two X, B three, MXD.
In residential zones, it's by special permit, um, for three to eight units. So the idea was to um, bring three family residential uses in line with the way the state defines, uh, multifamily, which is four and up, and three is treated um, differently than larger units. But we say three families, multifamily. So the idea is to take three family out of how we define multifamily. Call it a three family owned and, on its own and give it its own standards where special permit would not be required in as many instances. That's the idea in a nutshell.
Can you help us remember, I, I, I seem to remember that we pulled three to eight units out as a separate line item a few years ago, right?
Correct.
Did we have discussion at that time about three?
I, I don't recall. I, I think, um, so we did pull multifamily units from three to eight units out as a separate kind of sub role under A three of the use table. And the reason the board proposed that and town meeting approved it was because there were a number of larger multifamily uses in existence, uh, throughout town that, um, all of the sudden people were discovering as they went to refinance or pull building permits, they couldn't get permits for these existing dwelling units and, um, the fear was that this stock of rental housing would be lost. So you have a six unit here, a five unit there. Uh, there was, there was no way to, um, bring them into conformance at the time. So whatever year that was, we proposed to at least give them a, a special permit path to bring them in.
It also, it also conflicts with, with what we allow by right, though. Because we effectively allow three families by right, if you include an ADU. That brings in three families.
Yeah, and, and I think the reason at the time we didn't get into discussion, Brandy, about, um, giving three families more flexibility in terms of where they're allowed is because the town had always had that in its zoning tradition, that three families equaled multifamily.
Okay.
Um, and, and at the time, we just thought, let's give it a special permit path, so these important structures can come into conformance. And, and that was it. We thought that was the, the only door we needed to create, if you will. But we didn't look at it from any other perspective. We certainly didn't equate it, as Jonathan suggests. We, we, we didn't take that logical step to equate three family as being essentially the same as a two family plus an ADU.
Right, so then I guess the question is, do we re- do we need a separate line item, or could we change A two to dwelling, two and three family?
Yeah.
Right.
And then go from, then go from four to eight for the multifamily.
Right.
It depends on how you would like to regulate them. I see Jer- Jeremy's hand.
So Jeremy, go ahead.
So, I mean, isn't, so I mean, isn't the question is like, how did we differentiate between, um, like two unit plus ADU versus like someone that wants to build three units, right? Where there, where the third is bigger than ADU? Because, right, still, we want to, because it's not by, it's not a by right use if they want to build three units. Um, if the, if the third one isn't, i- if the third one is bigger than a ADU.
Correct.
And so, but that's, so that's the point of this, right? And so I, I, and so how do we define that? I mean, I think the mul- maybe the multifamily, it's a good idea to take it up to four to eight, but, um, or multi-unit, um, but then how do you, how do you address that middle thing, you know, so that it frees up that, that like if someone wanted to build new two unit plus an ADU versus, you know, like someone that wants to build three units.
Yeah, I think that would have to be evaluated. I think we'd have to look at eight point one, two family residential use of a single lot and see if the performance standards that are set there or the performance standards that are set in eight point two accessory dwelling units still make make sense or need to be modified. Right?
Yeah, because you, you don't want someone that like is building from scratch, two units plus an ADU, to have to go through some sort of special permit process, right?
Right.
Yeah, and so that's.
When has that happened? I know that's a theoretical possibility, but I mean, what we've typically seen are people coming with an existing structure, right? Like an old Victorian that's got multiple units in it.
But you don't want to limit it, is what I'm saying. Like if we allow it by right, then you, we don't want to make it a special permit just because you're building from scratch.
Sure.
Uh, a- actually, I'm in, I'm in favor of this, um, but I, I caution about the argument, Jonathan's argument. Because, uh, this year we're saying, okay, well, they're already allowed three, so let's allow them three, but now we're, they're going to be allowed four. So maybe next year we'll have a discussion about allowing four by right.
How, how would they be allowed four?
Uh, well, the three, uh, in a multifamily plus the ADU.
I, I think that would be the item that would need to be up for discussion, because I don't think that's where we're going.
Yeah, I don't think that's what we're saying.
One more every year.
Well, I think what we have been seeing, though, is we've been like creeping up the size of the ADU, right? Which I don't know that I'm opposed to that. I just, you know, I think Pedro makes the argument, which is, I think, totally rational, as long as you're meeting the coverage for that particular zone. What does it matter how many units you have there, right?
Well, it changes the neighborhood, but, uh,
Maybe, maybe not.
Yeah, I mean, it maybe, maybe not, right, but it could. Uh, and that's, that could be the, the only thing I would think is, uh, turning a residential into an apartment house can change neighbor.
So let me ask, when, when, when you say that, why, why are you not petitioning to change the bylaw then? Because, for example, to bring up Brandy, Brandy's example, I mean, if you have like a ten thousand square foot coverage on a small lot, which I've got on my lot, more than that, and I can build ten thousand square feet on that lot, I can do it as a single family house.
Okay. Uh, I'm not sure what.
Why would that not change the character of a neighborhood? I mean, I'm not, you know, when you, when you say that about the coverage, like we have this coverage law, which is very generous in a lot of places. And it exists. And it has the potential to change, you know, like you say, to change a neighborhood, to change whatever. But it's, uh, people can do it now.
I, I, if I can, if I can venture a guess, um, Malcolm, correct me if I'm wrong, but, you know, taking a single family, ten thousand square foot house versus ten thousand square feet that are, you know, uh, three units changes the intensity of the use. So maybe that's not a character issue, but it does change the intensity of the use of the property, right?
Yeah, and I, I, I think we, we need, I mean, based on our discussion here, we're looking at units of four or more, not three or more. If we make three by right, which I am, am in favor of, I, I, but I do think that some point, whether it's three or four or five, it's a qual- qualitative difference between a single fa- uh, family residence and a multifamily at some level. And I'm not saying that that's a bad thing. I'm saying that at some point you have to have some review of that. And that's where the special permit comes in.
So, so in terms of item B under this agenda item, it sounds like in general, this board is in favor of pulling the three family out of the multifamily and, and putting it with the single family, two family. Is that generally like, can we nod in agreement or? Like, if, something, okay, so.
I, I think Jeremy did raise a, a, a real point, though, which is we allow three as long as one of them is an ADU.
Mm-hmm.
And so, uh, whatever change we make, I think has to reflect what's, what the zoning bylaw allows.
Mm-hmm. So you, are, are you saying you'd want to be more cautious about three equally sized units as opposed to a duplex with an ADU?
Well, the town has, the, I mean, the town hasn't approved.
Well, the duplex with the ADU is approved, is existing now, right? We can already do that. So if we're looking to make this less stringent, we would, we would be assuming it'd be units larger than the ADU would be covered under the three family, right?
Well, I don't know. That's, that's what I think we have to discuss.
Okay. But, but I.
Go ahead.
I was just going to say, I think that, that the discussion we're going to have about like sort of objective characteristics of this kind of development are probably going to feed the discussion of sort of minimum performance standards for item A under this agenda item. Uh, so we may want to have this as sort of uncomprehensive discussion about, um, an uncoupling of three family, placing it with single, two, three family together, and then the related, um, minimum thresholds that would potentially trigger a site plan review. Does that sound, I'm just trying to help Chris focus on what information to get to us. Pedro, what did you want to say?
I just wanted to make a, a quick comment about something I haven't given a tremendous amount of thought to, but if we're talking about three fam- we're not talking about the ADU and the two family, we're talking about three families in one building. That's look this again, bear with me people, but it's looked, looked upon differently by the state building code than a one and two family. I don't know if that has any relevance. Like, I mean, I haven't given, like I said, I haven't given a lot of thought. But it's got, you know, degress issues, it's got fire protection and all this stuff, which I, and it's building code stuff. I don't know, something weird. It just strikes me as something that I should give some thought to, and I was wondering what you guys thought about that.
Well, so I, I think that's a good point and something we should be co- conscious of, and, and I appreciate having architects on the board that can raise those issues. I, I was just flipping over to the definitions, though, because I don't think that our definitions necessarily say that the two family unit, uh, two family dwelling has to be attached, right? And so
Right.
building code, I, I think pertains to attached.
Yeah.
Right.
Right, but I'm talking about somebody who would build a three unit in one building. Or somebody who wants to convert their Victorian to three units.
So if that were the case, though, building code's going to prevail regardless of what we need.
Right, so I don't know. Yeah, I mean, you're right. Again, I haven't given a lot of thought. I, it's, I don't know if my question is about whether or not it, it's, um, would be a relevant move to make because of the building code. In other words, that the building code is so restrictive with three families that it would never happen anyway. So maybe what we're defining is detached three family on a lot, right? Because what we're talking about is lot use.
Yeah.
The building code's talking about is a build.
Right, right, yeah. A- and, and I think that's clear, you know, we define both single family dwelling and two family dwelling as detached residential buildings. Designed for occupancy by not more than two families. So we would have to consider modifying the definition for multifamily dwelling and adding a three family dwelling potentially.
Right.
Uh, Brandy?
Yeah.
Uh, when we started the discussion, Chris mentioned that, um, in the state code, uh, three uh, family dwelling is, is treated differently than four and up. Is it treated differently than two?
Building code, yeah, the, 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 the residential code of the state treats one and two family differently than it does everything else.
Yeah, but Chris said three and, three was different than four and up.
Let's let Chris answer.
Alright. Um, this was something Chris Brown brought up to us. I believe it's under forty A under the zoning act, not under building code, that, um, three family is not within what the state calls, quote, a multifamily. Multifamily is four and up.
A- and maybe Jonathan.
But here in Great Barrington, we say multifamily is three.
Yeah.
That was the only distinction that was dropped. It may be a distinction without a difference. I don't know.
Yeah.
Uh, but it's something we should consider.
Um, a- and isn't there a distinction in lending requirements too?
Probably, three family is probably a commercial rate. So there are lots of. Pardon me?
I think it's four. I don't know, Jonathan, do you know? No, it's three?
I, I, I know that a two family, as long as you live in it, you gotta, you got a residential rate. I don't know about a three family.
Okay. It might be something to check.
The zoning act also treats, um, one and two families differently than three families, uh, in terms of non, pre-existing non-conforming uses.
Okay.
The building inspector can issue permits straight out for one and, for non-conforming single and two family structures under certain, certain circumstances. I think that's five point five of the zoning bylaw. And that's directly through the authority of, of the zoning act, um. You know, if it's two family, that's non-conforming, is hardly being changed, the building inspector can issue a permit for that. If it were a three family that was non-conforming, that's being changed, they'd need to go for a public area special permit. So there are kind of levels, if you will, and three family seems to exist in this mid range of permissions.
So if we made the, uh, three, you know, changed the, the, uh, use table, made the three family in, you know, the same lines as the two family, would we be running into conflict then with, uh, uh, state code, state law?
No, I don't think you'd conflict.
You were talking specifically about an existing non-conforming.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, all right, board. So do we want to continue your discussion here? We'll take a look at, uh, ten point five, maybe Malcolm, you and I can think about, uh, some, some threshold type criteria.
Yeah, I'd like to give that some thought.
Or some additional performance. Some additional performance standards under eight four, okay. And, uh, I, I think it does sound like we're pretty supportive of pulling the three family out, um, and putting it in with the. The single and two family, and there's probably a lot of places that touches in our code. Um, Chris, do you think, um, for our next meeting? Uh, I don't know if you have help right now, like an intern or anybody who could search the code for us for all those things that would need to be. Potentially amended. Definitions.
No, I, I don't, but I think we could. You know, our, our goal should be to discuss this at the next meeting.
Yep, okay. Okay, great. Anything more on this agenda item? No? Okay, so we'll move on to item seven, financial strategies and staff capacity. So a lot of this came out of, um, Chris Brown's presentation. He had, he'd, uh, provided a number of, uh, different. Strategies that could be, um, approached and, and Chris and Pedro and I spoke, um. Last week, and it did seem like a lot of those strategies fell into sort of two issues or two categories. One, financial, um, aspects to incentivize, be it with, um. Like abatement of fees or taxes or things like that, that aren't going to be in this board's purview, but we could certainly recommend. Um, to the select board. The Affordable Housing Trust. So, you know, we may want to think about, uh, doing that in the coming weeks. At some point in the next couple of months, we'll have a joint meeting with the select board to talk about a few things, and, and we may want to make sure that's on our list. Um, the others were much more intensive and may require additional staff to really implement, um, and. Sort of given where we are capacity wise, I don't know that we can take them on right now. Um, I don't know, Chris, did you have a list? Did you break those out into a list that you can share with us, or do you want to speak to any of them specifically?
Uh, we can talk about a few, few of the items, some of which we discussed, uh, last time with Chris Brown and. I think Pedro and Brandy and I spoke. Um, about some of them as we were preparing this draft agenda for this week, um. One financial incentive would be, uh, tax incentives to landlords who rent. Uh, rent housing units at affordable levels. And or on a long-term basis. That's the Provincetown mass example. Um, that's something that, um. Town meeting would have to approve, special legislation would be required, uh, through the, through the state. But that may be something that this board wants to recommend the select board pursue. Um. Another item would be stipends or grants to landlords who keep the rents below some designated level. Um. That would probably be, um. Something that may require additional staff capacity. So first item was. Uh, tax incentives or abatements. That's something that can occur through the regular, uh, tax abatement process for the assessor's office, I think. Um, the example we got from Provincetown didn't show a huge volume. And I think there were a hundred. And that happened every year, but I'm not sure it's a massive issue. Who knows? We'll talk to the assessor's office about that. But giving stipends and grants to landlords may be, that's, that's also an additional. That's something we don't do now at all. So that might be a new program. Uh, that would require staff also, as well as the funds for the grants themselves.
Would that be, would that be income dependent for the landowner?
I didn't catch that.
Would that be income dependent for the landlord owner to qualify?
Uh. No, it would be depending on, uh, it would require the unit rented.
Sure.
To be, uh, a certain, not be more than a certain level.
Right.
And Chris, if you just hold for a moment, Jeremy's got his hand up. I think it's on this item as well.
Yeah, Chris, what you were talking about, that was the one where it's like after the fact, right? So after the year happens and that they've rented, um. Uh, whatever period of time to, uh, a tenant who is income qualified, right? Is that what, is this the one?
That could be one of the examples, yeah.
Cause that was a, that was the simple example that he gave, right? Well, wow, it seemed like the lower, lower amount of, uh. That effort, all you have to do is show that. Right?
Yep.
Yeah. Yeah, that, that one seemed really interesting when he presented it. But you're saying that even that would require, as, was it a significant amount of, um, extra staff? I mean, staff time?
Well, we don't know. We don't know, good. So as. As this board, uh, thinks about these things and we talk about it with other boards, that's a relevant consideration. Um, another financial. Or incentive item would be buying out units, uh, that are rented currently as short-term rentals. Some towns that have a lot of short-term rentals and a lack of workforce housing on a permanent basis. Are actually using cash and approaching. Uh, those people and saying, we'll give you X amount of dollars, uh, if you. Put a restriction on here and you don't short-term rent it, but you make it available. On a long-term basis. Lot of examples of that out on the front range in Colorado dealing with the short-term rental issue. Uh, another item was buying affordable housing restrictions outright, uh, in order to preserve existing housing. So that's a house that. Uh, it may be, and may, may need some cash, you know, maybe there's, um, people who, who are on fixed incomes or, or. Something like that, and, uh, there's a real opportunity to preserve it as a relatively affordable unit. Uh, in the same way the town buys development rights for agricultural preservation. Or conservation restrictions, you would buy the development right and essentially cap this future sale price and development that, of that. The future sale price of that property. Um, and the Affordable Housing Trust or other entity could hold that restriction perpetuity that may require staff. Uh, or we could partner with an agency that does these things. Um, another idea is exempting or deferring property values, uh, that are increased after. Uh, somebody builds, let's say, another unit, accessory dwelling unit. Rather than, um. Assessing the property at that increased level immediately. It could be phased in, uh, if. If that new unit was affordable for a certain amount of time. That's something that is actually not available to, to towns like us right now. Uh, the state, um, law only allows certain. Uh, cities to be able to do, uh, things like that. Uh, exempt or deferred, uh, property taxes. So those are things to consider, and I, I wonder if. Um. I, I wonder if the, the best way to go about this would be for me to. Maybe draft a, a, a letter or memo for the board's consideration. And then that would be something that you. Endorse and send off to the select board, to the Affordable Housing Trust. Um, some way to, for, for you as a board to get behind some ideas and lay them on the table for. For others, uh. To, to carry to town meeting.
Yeah, I think that.
I would be for, I'd be for. Pushing all of these things. Um. What I'd like to do though, before we pass it on, before it leaves this committee, is to have some language in place that. Identify some key metrics and whatever, one of those policies or, uh, that were, uh, recommended. In other words, that when the select board gets their hands on these things, you're actually looking at that. Basically a draft kind of model bylaw that they can then discuss. Right? Cause I've seen too often something gets at their desk and they discuss it for a minute as in terms of it being, whether or not it's a good or D or a bad idea. But so I, I would hope that we can give them something that they could actually. Think about, implement. And not have to do a ton of work on it.
Let's hold for just one second. Um, Jeremy's got something and then we can take up this line of discussion.
Um, but that la- that last one, Chris, the, um, the deferment one. Can't you accomplish the same thing with the other one, just like an abatement thing? Um. With the landlord showing that the, it was rented to a income qualified tenant. Like effectively accomplish the same thing?
I think so, Jeremy.
And that's already within our ability?
No, in either case, I believe it requires state legislation.
It, oh, it does to do, to do a, to do a property tax abatement, it does?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
The Provincetown example, special legislation, the last example is also probably.
Oh, okay. Okay.
We simply don't, towns simply don't have that, uh, authority.
We can do a TIF. How is this different than a TIF?
You can do TIFs for, uh, tax increment financing for commercial job creating projects. You can't.
That's all.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah.
And, and so Chris, I know your plate is very, very full. Is this something that the BRPC folks can help flesh out? And put that memo together and, okay.
It's really versatile, yeah.
That, that would be fantastic. All right, so are we all agreed? We want to move forward with, with that summary and a little bit more fleshing out of some of these concepts? We can make a solid recommendation. And then I guess Malcolm, it'll be on you. As a housing subcommittee advocate from this board to help push some of those things through. Cause I could see it moving to the subcommittee for discussion and fleshing out further.
Uh, absolutely.
Awesome. Okay, Chris, was there anything else you wanted to cover under item seven?
No, uh, I think that's a really great start.
Okay, good. Thank you, everybody, for your contribution.
Oh, the, uh, the other thing, Brandy, back on six, did, we, we didn't really talk about the, um. And it was the last note on, um, agenda item six about the use of the word family.
The use of the word family?
That was a note I put in, in my memo to the board earlier this week. It was. Hey, by the way, many, many towns are getting away from the term families.
I see, I see, okay.
Uh, family implies blood relations or at least, uh, uh, close relation, whereas most. Whereas many. Whereas the composition of households is changing pretty dramatically.
So, so family as defined in our code is one or more individuals related by blood marriage or adoption. Or not more than five individuals who are not so related, living together as a single housekeeping unit.
Yeah.
Is that broad enough?
So we can change the word to household.
Yeah, I think, uh. You know, why don't I look at that and propose something to you?
That makes everybody happy. That is no problem. Okay, thanks, uh, thank you, Jeremy. All right, item eight is board and subcommittee updates, issues and concerns. Jonathan, anything for you?
No.
Pedro, anything for you?
Yeah, I got a, um, I get something to say about something I've said before. Um, I, I would like to have a discussion on this board regarding. The types of residential uses that we allow. Now, this started when, uh, Josh Irwin came to the housing subcommittee. And proposed using the wind. Flower.
Flower.
Windflower in as a. Sort of workforce housing. Uh. Development. And as you know, this place.
He's dropped that, but construct.
Constructs, I know. And, um, but the point is that, that, that place is not going to provide. What we would define as a dwelling unit to the people living there. They're basically going to be borders. We have limits to how many borders you can take on, so on and on. I'd like to have a discussion. And in doing so, I'd like for maybe the board to, to brainstorm on different types of habitation. That we can maybe discuss and include in our bylaw. So for example, the SRO, which is, it's what they would be doing at Windflower.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, is there any other type of, of, uh, housing that existed before zoning came in?
And for the uninitiated, and uninitiated, uh, SRO is single room occupancy, right?
Right.
Yes.
Okay, and we, why have we, we have touched upon this about a dozen times, but we've never really fleshed it out. Is there some reason we haven't gotten into it? Is it because?
Year of short-term rental discussion.
Huh, okay, all right. Anything else, Pedro?
No, that's it. Thank you.
Malcolm, anything for you?
Uh, you know, I, uh, when I was looking through the bylaws, I had, um, a question and, and maybe it can, it, there's a simple answer. Uh, but in eight point one point one, um, it's, this is the two-family residential use on a single lot.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, it says that, um, um, uh, these should be considered two-family residential use. Except where four point two point one or eight point two applies. Eight point two is the ADU.
Mm-hmm.
Four point two point one is the two principal residences on a property that we just, uh, passed. Is it? Does this mean that, um, if it qualifies under four point two point one, two principal residences on a property? It's not considered a two-family residential use on a single lot?
Hmm, that's a good question. I, I don't know the answer offhand.
Why wouldn't it be considered two family?
It says except where section four point two point one or eight point two applies, which says to me that, uh. Uh, if it, there's two, um, and, and I don't know whether this is good or bad. I'm not, uh, I'm saying it's a value judgment. I'm just saying, is this the way it is, uh, where, uh, if it's two principal dwellings on a lot. It wouldn't be considered two-family residential use of a single lot.
And it must have.
Must be a history for that.
It says that where?
Uh, on eight point one point one.
And four point two.
And it may just be my convoluted reading, but, uh.
Uh, it's a good question, Malcolm. I think this one we should, you know, like make note of and.
I didn't expect to discuss it and come to a conclusion today. I was just wondering if there's a simple answer, and if not.
Thank you. All right, Jeremy, anything for you?
Sorry, I got. Yeah, I got cut out for a little bit, so I missed a little bit. But, um, so we did have our CPC meeting, uh, uh, last week, Thursday.
Mm-hmm.
And, um, uh, we did not reorganize. Uh, we were waiting for more of the members to be able to be present.
Mm-hmm.
Um, we did have the initial discussions around the, uh, revising the plan for this year.
Okay.
Um, and we do have another meeting scheduled. I believe it's the Tuesday, the twenty-third of August.
Yeah.
Um. And, uh. Yeah, I think that's it. I mean, I think Chris is gonna, we, we did have a discussion around the plan, and so I think. Chris is gonna put something together for us to discuss then and then set the, cause we did not set the public meeting. Uh, for the plan, yes.
Okay, thank you. And I have nothing to report for Lake Mansfield, so there are no other issues and concerns. Um, Chris, do you have a town planners' report?
Uh, no, um, not much to report this week. Uh, I don't yet have anything pending for the meeting of August eleventh, your next meeting. But I did want to note that the Affordable Housing Trust and Habitat for Humanity are attempting to schedule. Or maybe already have scheduled for that evening of the eleventh. Um, kind of a community meeting in person, I think, to review concepts for the North Plain Road housing site. Um, so I, I think they were looking to start that at five or five thirty that evening. Planning board usually starts at six. Would, would you want to start a little bit later, in case people want to attend both meetings that night?
I'd be open to that. I'd be interested in attending that meeting. And, and so they're taking input before they're making a formal application. Is that where we're at?
Right, right. So I'll let you know when, when that is settled, but, uh. We could push the planning board to six thirty or seven. Or unless you want to do it a different way.
There was discussion, there was discussion at the Affordable Housing Trust about. Having joint meetings with the planning board or the select board. Um. And has anyone reached out to us about that?
Um, I, I honestly don't, don't know. I, I may not have gotten to that email.
Um, uh, maybe at some point in time that would make sense, Jonathan, um, just so that we can all be around the same. Computer screen or table or whatever it ends up being.
Why don't, why don't we request it? We don't have to wait for them to request it, right? Why don't, why don't we request it? We don't have to wait for them to request it, right?
Well, I think if they're not ready to make an application, you know, I mean, there's validity in engaging earlier rather than later, so that they don't go, you know, too far down a path, but um but at the same time, I want to respect their uh, you know, their portion of the process and give them time to develop a plan and get some community input. Um, I see Eileen's got her hand up. Eileen, assistant in relationship to Chris's town planner report?
I I'm pretty much done, so you can move ahead.
Okay, so we'll move to citizens' speak. Eileen? Let's see, are you on the phone also, Eileen? Ah.
Go ahead and try it on you.
Okay, now.
We can hear you.
All right, I have my invitation for the Habitat for Humanity, and I have to close this off. Okay. All right, now, call that. And it's Thursday, August eleventh, anytime from five thirty to seven thirty at the Husitanic Real Estate Office's four oh two Hart Street, New Satanic.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Five thirty to seven thirty at Husitanic Real Estate.
Right, and it's it's a a drop-in because it says anytime.
Thanks.
All right. I, but you want me to send it to all of you?
Wonderful.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
I just may not have seen it yet.
Uh, Frank Clark sent it to me. It probably is just getting out.
Great, thank you, Eileen.
Yeah, I saw drafts. I wasn't sure if it was set. Guess it's set once it's in Eileen's hands.
Exactly.
That was public.
Uh, any other citizens' speak items? Just raise your hand, and Chris will unmute you. I see we have a couple people on the call still. All right, seeing no additional hands raised, we will adjourn at seven thirty-two. Uh, yes, Kim, did you have a question?
I I just want to know what to do with the minutes. Can I send them to the town clerk and send them to all of you, or wait to send them to the town clerk?
I I would say go ahead and send them to the town clerk. Um, and if if you could copy us on the completed version that has the attachment, that would be great.
Will do.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay, anything else? All right, I hope you all have a lovely evening. All right, safe travels, Jeremy.
Night, everybody.
Bye.